Well, good afternoon, everyone, and thank you. Welcome to the June 24, 2025 regular meeting of the Placerville City Council. If you'd all rise and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right. Well, thank you very much. Let's see. Do you want to call the roll, please?
Councilmember Carter?
Here.
Mayor Clarici?
Here.
Vice Mayor Gottberg?
Here.
Councilmember No?
Here.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a ceremonial matter, but apparently the roofing person is not here yet. Unless one of— no. Okay. So we're just gonna put that off, but I'm gonna tell you right now, once he enters the room, we are going to stop and recognize him and then go back to whatever it is the heck we're doing now. So that's it. Closed session report. There is none. We did not have a closed session. Adoption of the agenda. Does somebody wish to adopt our agenda?
I'll move adoption.
I'll second.
We have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right. Brief comments by the city council, item number 6.1. I'll start over here this time.
I have none.
I have none.
I have none.
I also have none.
Wow. I have one. It was my honor to be at the bell tower at the end of the torch run for the Special Olympics, and it was fantastic. It just—it makes you feel proud to be a member of this community when you have that kind of effort from all sorts of different groups coming together and helping out this very worthy cause. Kind of get a little emotional sometimes when you just think about it. So—and all the law enforcement folks were present, the fire department was present. It was a great day. The weather was perfect to run from mosquito down to the bell tower. The Olympians were resplendent, so I just want to say the city shines the best under situations like that. And congratulations to PD and to the fire department because you're here, but probation was involved, the sheriff's office, CHP, everybody was there. It was a really good thing. So anyway, I did that, and it was an honor and a privilege to be part of that. So that was my thing. So we've adopted that. We are going to have—so item 6.2. An annual update on the El Dorado County Navigation Center by Health and Human Services Agency, so come on down.
Good evening, council members and members of the public. My name is Timlyn Janes, and I am the Assistant Director of Human Services for Health and Human Services Agency, and I'm here to present the—this is an annual update that I present to the Board of Supervisors regarding the Navigation Center and how the Navigation Center is operating. So the Navigation Center opened its doors on February 7, 2023, and the intent was to allow for no camping enforcement, encampment abatement, and an effort to mitigate fire risk in El Dorado County and provide emergency shelter for unhoused county residents. Today's presentation is going to summarize the second year of operations, which would be February 8, 2024 to February 7, 2025. However, with that caveat, there is some cumulative data that's included in this report because I think it's important to see the difference in the data between year one and year two and how we're progressing in successful operation of the Navigation Center. And I'll call that out as we get to those areas. If I can figure out how to operate this. There it goes. Okay. So homelessness by the numbers. We have a continuum of care in El Dorado County called El Dorado Opportunity Knox, and part of the requirement of having a COC and receiving COC funds is that we conduct a point-in-time count every two years. So in 2022, our point-in-time count—let me also clarify. The point-in-time count, it's mandated that it be conducted during the last two weeks of January, so we can pick any day as long as it's within the last two weeks of January. The 2022 point-in-time count showed that we had 73 persons experiencing sheltered homelessness, meaning they're sheltered but they're in some type of an emergency shelter, and 438 persons experiencing unsheltered homelessness across the county. And in 2024, we had 149 experiencing sheltered homeless. This is due to the increase of emergency beds available within the county, and then 135 experiencing unsheltered homelessness. One caveat that I like to really point out is that this is just—this is information that's gathered over—in 2022, we did a two-day period. We did one day on the West Slope and one day in the basin. In 2024, we used a different vendor through the COC to help us organize the point-in-time count. We also conducted the count on the same day on both slopes. So that can contribute also to a variance in numbers, and again, it's a snapshot in time, so it's not a hard and fast number that this is absolutely the number of homeless people in our county. So just like to make sure everyone understands that. Uh-oh. Sorry, I'm not used to this clicker. Okay. So the El Dorado Opportunity Knox COC developed a strategic plan to end homelessness in 2022. It was a collaborative effort between all partners that participate in the COC and HHSA, and the El Dorado County Board of Supervisors reviewed the plan also. And I honestly—I don't know if the city was included because I wasn't a part of it when this was developed, so I'm not sure. But they identified four strategic plan goals. The first goal is to stop homelessness before it begins. The second goal is to increase access to housing for all El Dorado County residents. The third goal is to increase access to homeless emergency response services, and then the fourth is to partner across El Dorado County to build collective solutions. And so we've met the goal three by opening the Navigation Center—or at least worked towards meeting the goal. I need to figure out which button this is. There it is. Okay, now I know. Okay. What services are provided at the Navigation Center? So we contract with Volunteers of America to operate—to run the day-to-day operations within the Navigation Center, and then BOA employs case managers that work with participants in the NAV Center. The case managers work with the participants to help them become document-ready. For those that don't know what that means, it's—a lot of times, someone that's homeless doesn't have an ID, they don't have their birth certificate, they can't get their social security card, so the staff there help them to connect with the necessary entities so that they can secure the documentation that's needed in order to secure stable housing. You can't rent an apartment without an ID. They also develop an individual service plan, and I'll go into that a little bit further in the next slide. And they also develop a housing assessment plan. They assist with benefit enrollment, so that would be any benefits that are public assistance benefits that they may be eligible to that they're not enrolled in and receiving. They help with employment plans, referrals to behavioral health, and then also income maximization. Income maximization is helping someone apply for an income benefit that they are eligible or entitled to that they are not receiving. The biggest example is social security, whether that be retirement, disability, or SSI, but it could also be general assistance or veterans' benefits, things like that. They also conduct life development classes inside the Navigation Center, and the classes that they're currently offering are motivation for recovery, relapse prevention series, self-care, paying bills, identity theft, housing, renting versus leasing, and ready-to-rent series. And then we have behavioral health interventions. We have county behavioral health staff and SUDS treatment options. We have behavioral health staff are onsite once a week at the Navigation Center connecting with participants. We also have social workers in our housing and homeless unit that work very closely with behavioral health staff that also help to refer. We have—the Community Health Center's behavioral health is onsite, and we have—the Community Health Center comes to the Navigation Center on Tuesday mornings weekly. They bring their van—or their van to the site so they can schedule appointments there, and then they also have a kind of a triage where they meet with participants and try to connect them to services that may be needed. And then we also have begun working with the NAMI Clubhouse now that that's open. We also have monthly NA meetings, weekly AA meetings, Bible study, and then martial medical nurse is also at the NAV Center once a week. Okay, so this is where I talk about what the individual service plan is. So when an individual is admitted into the Navigation Center, there are only two referral pathways. That is through law enforcement. There are 54 beds dedicated to law enforcement for encampment abatement, and there are six beds that are dedicated to the COC for coordinated entry referrals. All referrals are vetted through Health and Human Service social workers to ensure that, number one, there's bed availability, and then also at that process, there's a homeless certification that has to be completed, and it determines where the person is. That's how we confirm that they are El Dorado County residents in order to admit them in. And the NAV Center will only receive referrals with the approval of our Health and Human Services social workers. So—and they schedule intakes for someone to come in because the intake process is about two to three hours long. When someone comes to the Navigation Center, they are brought into shower, given a clean set of clothing. Their clothing is—it goes right to the washer and dryer. There's BOA staff that do this. Any belongings that they have with them, they're allowed two totes worth of personal belongings, and the personal belongings are sorted through and sanitized and then taken out of whatever it is that they're bringing in and put it in that tote to ensure that there's nothing brought into the Navigation Center that we don't want brought into the Navigation Center. While that's happening, while BOA staff are doing that, the person is meeting with their case manager, and they're developing this individual service plan. And the individual service plan is a housing assessment. It's designed to identify housing barriers, referral opportunities, credit inaccuracies, and then housing opportunities. The information is gathered, it creates an ISP. The ISP is a to-do list with due dates that the participants are expected to work towards to reduce housing barriers and smooth the pathway to permanent housing. Clients then meet weekly with their case manager to review their ISP, and then the goal, of course, is for them to exit to stable housing with the skills to remain self-sufficient. And it's also—it's how staff track progress and engagement is through that ISP. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in coming slides. Right here. So participant commitment and support. Case managers, they meet the clients where they're at when they enter the Navigation Center. So they're encouraged to participate in their meetings with their case managers through positive reinforcement, motivational interviewing inspires clients to take advantage of services and better their lives, and then the program offerings at the Navigation Center also help participants engage. The weekly meetings with case managers are about 40 minutes long, and it's where they meet and discuss the progress on their ISP. Are they meeting their due dates? If they're not meeting their due dates, why aren't they meeting their due dates? What's the disconnect? What's the problem? How can we—do we need to change something, or do we need to do something to better support? And then they go to non-engagement. If someone is not engaging in—they give them three weeks before they start talking about non-engagement, and that's three weeks of missing the weekly meetings, or it can also be not meeting the due dates of their—on their to-do list and not having valid reasons for not meeting them. Once they've hit three weeks, the client receives a warning letter that non-engagement is grounds for exiting the program. And then if they still don't engage—and sorry, let me back up. And with that non-engagement—if they then engage, then they're given a plan. This is what needs to be done, and here's your due dates. And then if they don't do that, then an exit plan is developed. And like I said, the exit plan is developed for lack of engagement, and it's tailored to the client's circumstances. What do you need to do in order to stay? If you don't meet these things by these dates, you're going to have to leave. And then they'll be exited. So—and I want to talk about the exiting, too. So when someone is exited—if someone is exiting on good terms and is agreeable that they don't want to be there, they shouldn't be there, and they don't have permanent housing, but they have somewhere that they want to go, BOA staff will work to transport that person to wherever it is they're wanting to go. The best example that I can give is if it's someone from Tahoe and they want to go back to Tahoe, then BOA staff will work with our social worker staff to—or a bus pass, something—to help get them back to Tahoe or wherever it is they want to go. If someone is not exiting on good terms, then they are just exited, and then if someone is exited—does not want to exit but needs to exit and is not willing to cooperate, then that's when we call our friends, our law enforcement friends, to assist if they're not—if they're being combative. I don't know why I keep pushing. There—it goes. Okay. Service engagement encounters. So this is data that we recently began tracking. We started tracking it in October. Oh, do you want me to stop? Do you want me to stop?
No, yes.
Okay. No problem. No problem.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
On behalf of the city council, thank you very much for what you did. And I'll just read this. Morph—is it Morph?
Yeah.
Morph Roofing. Thank you for your contribution to beautification and—blech, a long word—sustainability within our community. Your valued investment illustrates pride, hope, and support for families and businesses. Because of your care, our community is cleaner, nicer, and happier. In recognition of your generous donation of a new metal roof and gutters for the historic Scout Hall at Placerville City Park, your contribution reflects true community spirit and a commitment to preserving spaces that serve our youth and families. And this is with heartfelt gratitude. The Placerville City Council dated this date, and thank you. I'm going to come down—we're gonna take a picture because that has to happen. And come on up. Come on up.
Very much. This is yours.
If you want to say anything, that's fine. If you don't want to say anything, that's fine, too. It's up to you. We appreciate it very much. Thank you.
I'm gonna say something for them because they're too shy and kind, but they just did an amazing job. If you haven't gotten by our Placerville City Park and taken a look at Scout Hall's new roof, you should go take a look. It was no easy or cheap endeavor, and these guys have been just super gracious, and yeah, I just wanted to make sure that everybody gets a chance to go see it. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. And yes, I did—I did drive by. Very nice. Very nice, and thank you very much. And I'll just let you know, you don't need to sit here any longer. It's probably been a long day, and you know, otherwise, you're more than welcome to stay.
Do you want to take public comment?
Oh, that's right. We have to have public comment. I'm sorry. Does anybody from the public wish to comment on what these gentlemen did?
Well, I live in that neighborhood. Sue Rodman, citizen of—resident of Placerville. And as I would go by and watch these guys, they worked hard, and they did a beautiful job. It really looks like 150% improvement over what it was. So thank you.
I'm in on the roof. Anybody up here wish to comment?
I just really want to echo the gratitude we have for you doing. This is what makes our community so great, when people come together and do these things, and we're very appreciative. Thank you.
I'll echo that. Your generosity is so much appreciated. Thank you, guys. Looks beautiful. I was there for part of the process while you guys were working up there, and it was amazing job. Well done. Thank you so much.
Would I like to—okay. Would I like to say—go ahead.
Thank you very much.
Okay, great. What I like to say is there's a lot of people in our community, and most of them are great. A lot of them like to talk, and some of them like to do, and it's really great when we get people that do things, step in when they see a need, and help us out, and that's what makes Placerville a really wonderful town. So you've probably—one more time. Thank you very much. All right. Okay. Now we're gonna go back. All right. One more time now, and we'll come back to our previously scheduled programming.
I'm excited to see the new roof on the Scout Hall. I'm gonna drive by there when I'm done here. So I want to back up. One thing about when someone is exited. So I know we've tried to figure out how we can make—how we can communicate with all of our partners without violating someone's confidentiality. So we receive an update from Volunteers of America daily that tells us how many beds are available and whether or not persons are exited, and how many people were exited. They use their HMIS, which is Homeless Management Information System identifier, so that we're not violating any confidentiality, but it at least gives—and that is sent to HHSA, social workers, and housing and homeless staff, and our law enforcement partners. So it at least gives an idea as to how many people have exited the Navigation Center, and then it also helps so we know how many beds are available when we're looking at encampments and places that need to be abated. So going on to service engagement encounters. So this service engagement encounters is data that we just started tracking in October of 2024, and the reason that we just started tracking it in October of 2024 is because we had—we did a competitive recruitment to identify the service provider that would run the daily operations at the Navigation Center, and the first one was Volunteers of America, and then we had to run a second one because it was expired. So the second one, Volunteers of America, also was the only vendor that responded, and so we had—we entered a new contract with them. So we built this into the new contract. So this is not how many people, but how many encounters a case manager had regarding a topic. So for example, case managers from October of 2024 until January 31 of 2025 had a little over 200 discussions regarding income maximization with clients at the Navigation Center, a little—about 150 conversations regarding referrals to behavioral health, 400 conversations regarding document readiness. So these are the topics that are discussed during their case management meetings, and this just captures what topics are being discussed when they're encountering—when they're working with the clients. Also, I think that's notable is the number of clients that have been employed while at the Navigation Center, and this is a cumulative number. It's 21. So since the Navigation Center opened in February of '23, we've had 21 clients stay there that are employed while they're there. So in—from February '24 to February '25, we had 224 referrals to the Navigation Center. 183 of those referrals were unduplicated persons. 188 of them were from law enforcement, and then it gives the breakdown of what we consider law enforcement. So Sheriff's Office was 96, Placerville PD was 57, probation 26, parole 5, and then South Lake PD was 4. We received 36 COC referrals, and that's through the coordinated entry. And then of the 183 unduplicated persons that were referred, 37 were referred twice, and four were—four individuals were referred three times. Oh, I thought I had it figured out. Okay. So the client demographics, that is something that does—that has remained pretty consistent throughout the—throughout the time that we've had the Navigation Center open. 67% male, 33% female. The average age of participants is 50, and you can see the majority of the persons in the Navigation Center are 45 and older. 18 to 24, we only had eight. 25 to 34, we had 21. 35 to 44, we had 41. And then 45 to 54, we had 31, which is down from 39 the previous year. And then 55 to 64, there were 57, which is up—it's up by 10 because it was only 47 the previous year. And then 65, we had 25 that were 65 and older, and that's up from 21 the previous year. The location, there were 166 came from the West Slope and 17 from South Lake Tahoe. So bed utilization, and it's just—this just compares the first year to the second year. The orange bar is the second year, the blue bar is the first year, and you can see we're pretty consistently full. During this last year, we had an average of—we were—jeez, I'm sorry. We maintained an occupancy rate of 93%, so we averaged 56 beds a night filled. There was a drop between July and August, and that is—there were two reasons. Number one, fires, so law enforcement efforts were diverted to fires, specifically the Crozier Fire. And then also, there was a flu outbreak at the Navigation Center at the same time that both of the washing machines broke. So we had to order washing machines, so they were very limited on their laundering ability. So they stopped intakes until they got at least one washing machine up and running. So that was—that accounted for the dip. Those are the two reasons that stood out as accounting for the dip, I should say. Okay. Clients stay and exit data. So the average length of stay in the second year was down 30% from the prior year. So in the first year, the average length of stay was 89 days, and in the second year, the average length of stay was 62 days. And that we attribute to—when the Navigation Center opened, the first encampment to be abated was the Broadway Encampment, and a large portion of the persons in—at the encampment came to the Navigation Center, and they came all at once. It was with—it was only, I think, a two-week period of time. So they—it was a brand-new Navigation Center with new staff, and it was—had almost 60 people in there. So getting their groove and just working with that number of people at a time to get them document-ready and all that was a slow process. The second year, we've seen a 55% increase in exits to permanent housing over the last year. year, again attributed to filling up at once and trying to work with, I mean, they, VOA has five case managers. So five case managers for, you know, I'll say 50 new clients, that's 10 apiece. That's a pretty big caseload for a population that's coming from being unsheltered into a navigation center. We had 19 exits to permanent housing in year one, but in year two, we had 43 exits to permanent housing. And in total, and this was as of the February of 2025, we had 62 exits, which, that's a 35% success rate. And according to the state's data, the state average exit to permanent housing is 26% for programs. So compared to state average data, we're, we're pretty successful. Exits to behavior violations, down 10% over the last year. So last year, we had 176 exits. Sorry. 176 exits total. That trips me up every time. 57 of them were exited due to behavioral violations and 73 exited due to excessive nights out. And then five exited to substance abuse treatment. So the 57 that were exited to behavioral violations is 10% less than the first year. That also, when the navigation center first opened, like I said, it was brand-new staff because most of the staff that work at the navigation center are Eldorado County residents. So they didn't have a lot of experience working in an emergency shelter. And we pretty quickly identified a need for development of de-escalation skills. So as, as staff developed those skills and we did, we worked with a couple of different partners to provide training, de-escalation training, so that we could help develop those skills, we have seen it decline. The, the 73 or, which is 41% exited to excessive nights out. So the shelter does have a curfew. It's 9:00 PM. If you're not at the shelter at 9:00 PM, you're not permitted in. And you're only allowed five nights out. And the five nights out are cumulative throughout your stay. It's not in a row. There are exceptions with approval from the case manager. So if someone is working a graveyard shift or something, that's not going to be considered a night out. Or if they're going to a family member's house. We've had some people that have reunited with families. So if it's, you know, a trial run, we're going to see if this works, that's not going to count because they're working towards exiting to permanent housing. So things like that are allowed exceptions. So again, because the navigation center, it is a low-barrier navigation center. So clients can be referred again after exiting. And this data is cumulative data. So clients with one visit, there were 116 of them, 34% have exited to permanent housing, which was 39 people, and they've all remained housed at the time that we did this. I can't guarantee that this is current today, but. Clients with two visits, there were 59 of them, 33 or 13 exited, 33% or 13 exited to permanent housing. 92% of those remain housed. Clients with three visits, there were 32 of them, 22% exited to permanent housing and three of them remain housed, which is 43%. Clients with four visits, it's 12% exited to permanent housing and 100% of them remain housed. And then clients with five or more visits, there's, there have been three clients with five or more visits, only one of them exited to permanent housing. This, initially, they did not remain housed. However, they worked with another community-based organization that helped them to secure housing after they had left the housing that they exited the nav center to and are now permanently So cost of operating the navigation center. So we have operating funds that are sourced from state and federal grants. And these are just the dollar amounts of the different grants. The, the top one, the CDVGCV, and then the second one, also ESGCV, those are both COVID-related grants. And they have been expended and they're, they've exceeded their expenditure due dates anyways. But we did expend them. This H-HAP, that includes five rounds. We have been awarded the fifth round. We haven't received the fifth round yet. And then ESG is an emergency solutions grant. And then the PLHA is a five-year grant term. There's also, it, it, some of this is written in really fine print, but there are general fund, county general fund contributions to the navigation center. There is 16,000 in negative interest, 113,000 in utilities. And then the other costs that aren't listed here, there, the sheriff's security officers that have been brought on is approximately $250,000. And we're still working on the cost of, there's also ground maintenance staff that have increased and then the cameras also that are at the nav center. Operations, like I said, they're contracted Volunteers of America for the day-to-day operations. And just for reference, that's about 120,000 a year. I mean, a month, sorry, a month. And then the upper room dining hall provides meals. So the upper room provides a hot meal for dinner. And then when they bring the hot meal for dinner, they also bring a continental breakfast for the person and a bagged lunch for the next day. And that runs about 33,000 a month. The average monthly cost of, per participant, and this doesn't include the, the county general fund costs, this just includes VOA upper room and HHSA staff. It's about 188,000 a month, closer to 189,000, which equates to about $3,145 per client per month or $105 per day. We did, HHSA does have a few other homeless programs that we operate. We have a housing support program through Cowworks. We also have a housing disability advocacy program, bringing families home and home safe. Those are all CDSS homeless programs. And we just did a quick review of what it costs us to, to support a client that's in those programs. Because those programs, we typically have persons in hotels, not at the navigation center, especially HSP is for families, so, and children can't go to the navigation center. So the average cost for those programs is about $191 a night because it's that added hotel cost that, that kicks in. And especially in Tahoe during peak seasons, it gets expensive up there. Okay. So our budget breakdown, these are the different grants that we have that are utilized either for the operation or the build of the future nav center. Like I said, the CDVGCV and the ESGCV have both been expended. We have HAP 1 through 5, both county and COC. And then we also have an emergency solutions grant that is county grant. And then we have the PLHA, which is also a county grant and that's over the five-year terms. And this just breaks down how much it goes towards operations and what we have set aside So how are HHSA's social workers involved? So HHSA's social workers, they work for the, with the clients to integrate other housing programs. So one program that works pretty closely with the navigation center is the Housing Disability and Advocacy Program. That program, it's a fairly small budget. And prior to the navigation center, if we had a client in H-DAP, we would put them in a hotel. And so it was really chewing through the budget. Part of the requirement for that grant is that we contract or that we provide a social security disability advocate to help expedite the social security application process. So we now take referrals from the navigation center into the H-DAP program so that we can expedite getting someone out of the navigation center because we have the disability advocate that helps this person get to identify what type of medical records are needed for their disability application. And then our social worker helps the participant get to the appointments, get the medical records that they need. The advocate helps fill out the application. And then if, if there's an appeal, they help with the appeal also. So it, it saves us money in H-DAP. It also expedites, it reduces length of stay for someone at the navigation center. And when they're accepted into the H-DAP program, the social security disability advocate looks at what the medical condition is and identifies whether or not it would be something that would be qualifying for social security. They also, again, there's other programs, that's just the best program that, we've seen the most success with that program. They also help with outreach and engagement. So our social workers collaborate with our law enforcement partners to identify outreach opportunities where our encampments, and they go with law enforcement partners. They, I would say they communicate almost daily to determine where outreach is needed, who's coming into the nav center, what beds are available. And they also help to stay in touch with those. If they're, if the navigation center is full, they help keep communication open with someone that is, is interested, maybe coming from a law enforcement referral, they want to come into the shelter, but there's not a bed available. So they help make sure that once that bed's available, they get in. And then lastly, they help with the data collection. They, they map out, create tools within the HMIS system so that they can capture the data that's needed for interested stakeholders. Okay, addressing homelessness continues to be a county effort, a county team effort. So Eldorado County Agencies are Health and Human Services and Probation. Eldorado Opportunity Knox, we work with all of the COC partners. Law Enforcement, EDSO, Placerville Police, South Lake Tahoe Police. And then some of our community partners that we work the closest with are Community Health Center, Marshall Hospital, the mountain, the Managed Care Plans, Housing Eldorado, and then Tahoe Coalition for the Homeless. Tahoe Coalition for the Homeless is, they have the only permanent supportive housing in the county right now. And so, and they have taken referrals from the navigation center to their permanent supportive housing units up in Tahoe. So just a couple of success stories to, to highlight some of the population that we see in the nav center. We had a, a senior person that found themselves homeless for the first time because the person that they were living with went to jail. And the senior was renting a room and when the person went to jail, they were no longer able to stay there. So they came into the navigation center, they had moderate income, but it was low in, I should say, stable income, but it was low income. This person had never been homeless before and was very motivated to find stable, secure housing again. So they worked with their Volunteers of America case manager and HHSA social worker, attended workshops, developed the housing plan. And within a month, or just over a month from entering the navigation center, they secured housing in a, at a local senior housing complex. Another example is a family. It was a single mother, a young adult child and a minor child. The, they were homeless. The, the minor child was able to be placed in a local, at New Morning Youth, Youth and Family. And the adult child and the mother went to the navigation center. The adult child participated in their employment readiness plan to develop skills to obtain a job. The mother already had a job, but it wasn't enough to support the family. The adult child was able to secure employment while at the navigation center. And within six weeks, they exited from the youth shelter and the nav center to permanent So that concludes my presentation. Do you guys have questions for me?
Do we have questions? I'm sure we have questions. Start over here. Anybody down here?
I can start. First of all, thank you very much for doing this.
You're welcome.
Very much appreciate there's, you know, there's obviously a lot of mystery surrounding the navigation center. It's good to get some facts and figures and, you know, some communication with you guys to really kind of, you know, figure out what's going on over there. Really very much appreciate your time in doing this. So a couple of questions. First, the, the PIT count, approximately, so you see, you did it all in one day this year, or in 2024. What are the size of the teams and what kind of cooperation did you have with law enforcement in conducting that PIT count this last year?
The teams, I'm gonna, don't hold me to this number, but I'm going to say three to five.
Okay.
Per team that were dispersed all over. And law enforcement cooper, not cooperated, participated in helping identify areas where they thought we might be able to find homeless individuals or encampments. And then law enforcement participated on the day of the PIT count also.
Excellent. Thank you. And then, so the, the programs that are offered at the navigation center, what kind of level of participation, is it mandatory to participate in the programs? I know you said that there is a mandatory meeting with the social worker, but beyond that, a, a, in a, some of the other programs, do you mandate that they participate or, how does that work?
We can't.
Okay.
The only thing we can mandate is that they engage.
Okay.
So, and when, when they develop the housing plan, it's something that they're agreeing to. So if, if, I'm going to give an example. Let's say when they're developing, not the housing plan, the individual service plan. When they're developing the ISP, if they're saying, part of the reason that I can't obtain a license or, or employment or something is because I have an addiction problem. They can agree to engage in behavioral health services. And then if they're not engaging and they're not, there, there's not a reason to change their ISP, then they can be exited for not, for non-engagement, if that makes sense.
Excellent. Okay. My next question is about the exited individuals. So the ones that are exited adversely, and you addressed this a little bit at the Board of Supervisors presentation, but, you know, communication with law enforcement for non-compliant exits. What kind of notification is required, especially regarding like registered sex offenders? I know we have a couple of registered sex offenders in our navigation center. What kind of notification to law enforcement is required when those guys are, and I know it's not personal information, but just generally, you know, information that's communicated to law enforcement upon exit?
None is required.
Right.
And that's where it gets really sticky. How do we meet a law enforcement need and remain in compliance with our funding and not violate our, the participants' rights? So we, again, we send the email, who's been exited. If someone is, I mean, if they're threatening harm, if it's not unusual that someone does not want to leave and we have to call law enforcement. At that point, when we call law enforcement, law enforcement engages, they know the person's exiting. But we're, we can't say, hey, we're exiting this person with this record.
Can you address specifically the, the registered sex offenders? Obviously, there's address requirements and so you would notify, if one of those people that has a registered address at the navigation center were to leave, there would be required notification about that, wouldn't there be?
We're not required to. It's, it's on the participant. They're required to.
Oh, understood. Okay. So you're not responsible for them once they leave the, okay.
Right, right, yeah.
And then I, I see, you know, the return visitors, so there's no maximum to the number of times that they can return?
No.
So if somebody's exited for adversely, is there a waiting period before they can come back or can?
There is a waiting period. And, and when I say, no, there's no limit, there are exceptions to that. We have one person that specifically was not able to return because of what was going on in the navigation center. So yes, there are certain things, certain conduct that, that will prohibit them from being able to come back. Otherwise, yes, it, and I couldn't quote the timeline, but it's like, there's, the length of stay, the length of time before they can return increases based on the number of, of times that they've been exited for violations.
Got you. Got you.
Thirty, sixty, ninety. Don't quote me on that timeline, but something.
Okay. And then last question is, so when law enforcement refers a customer to you guys, sorry, I keep calling them customers, client, when they refer a client to you, can you walk me through how that works, especially if that person is not, if they're not interested in going to the navigation center and law enforcement refers them to you? There's no, we don't force people to go to the navigation center. But how does that work when law enforcement refers a client to you guys?
So our social workers have a group text with law enforcement, and they text each other and say, I have this person that wants to enter the NAV Center. And then our social workers would say, okay, I have a bed available. And then they would coordinate when the person can go and who's transporting the person, how are they getting to the shelter?
Got you. So that's all prearranged through
Yes.
person-to-person contact?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you again for your time and for answering my questions, and I very much appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I have a couple. Thank you. Yes, thank you very much for coming and talking to us. I support, for the most part, what you do there.
Thank you.
Do you pay the, do you pay the Upper Room $33,000 a month to bring you food? Do they get paid that much money?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right.
And that's an average, but yes.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, just, yeah. You know, I get it that there's funding. Basically, you're bound by your funding.
Exactly. Yep. And we try to be, we try to work with
I understand. That's fine.
Yeah.
You can understand, though, that if you live in the city of Placerville, and, and I want to get to this issue with that one individual, that the registered sex offender that was brought here from South Lake Tahoe, came into your thing, for whatever reason, left, don't even care why, and ended up at Eldorado High School, and then was arrested, and now I'm assuming is in jail. You could understand how people in this town would just, if you cannot tell us that this person exists because of your funding, you might understand how the people in this town would not want this individual, irrespective of their housing needs, ever brought in the city limits. If, in fact, we cannot be told about this. Now, I know this is a rare situation. And we have had, always had, an issue with the kind of folks that get dropped at the navigation center, wash out for whatever reason, once again, and then just walk in and then become part of our community. And why they're not sent back, and once again, you've explained that, so I get that part. But, you know, there has to be some understanding of this, that it is unacceptable. Now, we can't do anything about the money you get, but I'm amazed this story hasn't gotten out to the public on what happened with that one individual. Because I guarantee you, if it did, there'd be heck to pay. How many, different subject, different question.
Okay.
I'm assuming there's a fairly high correlation between the people that want to be not homeless. Because I've known some folks that have ended up homeless for brief periods of time, jobs, life experiences, whatever. But they don't want to be homeless. They come to you, they say, please make me unhomeless. You hand them the list of things to do, you walk them through the thing, and you probably have a fairly decent success rate with that.
Uh huh.
And then you have the ones that darken your door five times, ten, whatever, some number. So there's, so, and I know that it's kind of a crapshoot in the sense that you don't really have, well, you have no control. They're referred to you by law enforcement through other programs or referred to your organization. But it seems to me like if we started focusing more on the people that actually wanted to not be homeless, we'd have a higher success rate. You probably wouldn't need the facility of the size it is. And I think the communities would be much more comfortable with what's going on there. Because if you drive up now, it's Fairlane, I'm assuming, I don't know if they're, oh, by the way, I'd like to recognize our county supervisor back there, Brian Veerkamp. He probably wanted to stay anonymous, but it's not possible in this venue. I'm assuming that they're going to move you somewhere because my understanding is, is that the old juvenile hall is destined for other things. And then that problem will just move to another side of the freeway presumably. And that's the people hanging out, you know, because everybody's got a friend and all of that. Anyway, thank you very much for that. And I don't really have anything else. I'm sure we have questions down the road here.
I don't have questions, I have comments, but I'm happy to wait till.
I just have one question. For our, for our, like, statistics numbers, do we have City of Placerville specific numbers? Like the point in time count, how many of those were in the city? The exits, how many were to the city?
Now I'm trying to think, because I know it's divided by the West Slope and South Lake Tahoe. It's in the point in time count report, and I can follow up and send it.
Okay.
I don't want to give you the wrong answer.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just wondering if it was like distributed that way, because obviously we're the city, and that's where our jurisdiction boundaries lie and end, and
Yeah, I mean
So I was just kind of wondering how, what percentage of this is actually
The part of me, there's a part of me, though, that thinks that that's fairly academic. I agree with you in knowing the number, but since we have services here, we somewhat are, I don't want to say magnet, because that's probably a little too harsh, but we become sort of a folk eye, a faux eye of this thing. And so, for example, the Upper Room. I'm sure the Upper Room brings people in, because, you know, we're only six and a half square miles, and the last count, we are like eight percent of the population of the county. And yet sometimes when these counts come out, they're like, well, we have like this ridiculously high homeless count. And you're kind of sitting there thinking, well, it defies logic that we would have more homeless people per capita than the surrounding county, at least central Eldorado County. You know, folks in Eldorado Hills probably don't lose their housing very often. But, and so, but I agree with you. I think it would be good just to know that number and then see what it looks like.
Well, I think you have to look at that number. For the last two years, we've been bringing in everyone from South Lake Tahoe and around the entire county, and we've been releasing them into the city. So just by the numbers, we already know we're going to have a much higher rate than
Right.
city residents, but they're in the city, but they're not city residents.
Right.
They've been brought here.
I have a question. How many people asked to be taken away? You know, not taken, you know, you know what I mean.
Well
Go back from Wednesday.
I don't have it broken down by how many voluntarily exited and how many involuntarily.
Well, how many asked for a bus ride back home? If that's what it takes, I mean, a car ride.
I couldn't tell you how many asked for a bus ride home. I could tell you how many exits
No, no, that's fine.
They went to. But I can, I can see if we track that specifically.
You know, I don't know, I have no idea how much longer you folks will be around. We don't, we don't actually control any of that. I think some of this would be useful information for us. I think it would be good to gather. I know that you have a lot of data you have to collect. I know it's a hard job. I know it requires a lot of work, and I do appreciate it. Don't get me wrong, my comments are not about you.
Thank you.
It's about
I understand.
the circumstances. But I think stuff like that would be really important. I think it would. I think knowing those things, and I, you know, ultimately, we have to help all the homeless, I guess. But it is sometimes a novel, it's an interesting thing to me because, as, once again, we're a very small city inside of a very large county. We only represent a very tiny fraction of the population. And so, it would be kind of, I would be curious, and I think others would be curious to know that. Okay, anyway, any other questions, comments, or anything?
I have a couple of comments. I mean, I'm just looking at the numbers you're giving me. And first, I want to congratulate you on forty-three people
Yeah.
to permanent housing, five people to treatment. That's what we're looking for. That's thirty-six percent. Sixty-four percent, one hundred and thirty people exited due to behavior violations, exited due to excessive nights out, with no offer to go back where they came from. Those one hundred and thirty people that are being released into the city are the ones I'm concerned about. I think I met with you probably well over a year ago, maybe a year and a half ago, and you had talked about doing better screening to the clients you were taking in who would accept the help and have a better success of getting into that permanent housing. And I guess I just want to review and see how we're doing with that, because I'm looking at sixty-four percent are
So I think that conversation was based around the permanent navigation center when we get to there.
Mm-hmm.
Because right now, we're sixty beds in our funding. I think it was based for what we can do in the future.
Well, I don't, I don't understand that either. I mean, it doesn't seem like we're targeting that we're not at least getting a fifty percent success rate, you know, of the people we're taking in who are not being re-released. I just wonder how we can, and this is probably more of a sit-down conversation, but how we can better target the people who are going to get into permanent housing and not taking in all the people who are going to release into our town who are starting fires, who are trespassing and trashing private property, public property, our bathrooms, and all the problems that come along, because that's our reality. And we can't ignore that either.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to present this evening. I hear your concerns. I think, I'd like to thank staff for doing such an amazing job with what they have. And I want to remind you that we are doing the very best that we can with what we have and are happy to hear suggestions about how we can improve. But I think maybe this is not the forum to do that. I'd love to have a sit-down meeting with all of you to have any input that you have about how we might be able to make improvements and make it so that you aren't feeling an undue burden.
Oh, thank you. Okay, all right. All right. Well, thank you. Okay.
Still need to take public comment.
All right. We would, I would like, I now open the floor to public comment on this item. You have three minutes per comment, sorry, just to tell you.
Ruth Carter, City of Placerville. I think that that question that Jackie was trying to pose was very valid and very reasonable. Whether or not there's a permanent center makes no difference on the screening. It should always be a continual process. And so I think your specific question was more about what has sort of evolved or changed. And it doesn't seem like with that many people being released back, you know, are those numbers double counted? Maybe there were people that were exited five times, and they're counting them all five times. Maybe it's some of the same offenders. You know, so let's understand the data that we're looking at. But also, I think that's a very valid point because in our city limits, we are getting dumped with people that are not compliant with social constructs. And that's what they're being asked to do. And they voluntarily raised their hand, according to what we're being told, either through law enforcement or through a caseworker. And then they're flopping out of the program, which understandably, you know, there are other issues, mental issues, there are drug issues, there are other things at play. I understand that. But these are valid concerns, and I think that that is something that the public deserves to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. Anyone else wish to comment on this? All right. Well, oh, big. There's a microphone.
Brian Veerkamp, District Three Supervisor, Eldorado County, this time around and a while back as well, but lifelong resident also. I wasn't a supervisor when Hangtown Haven was prolific on the upper end of town. And John, you mentioned a word, magnet, that may be not a good word, but it is what it is, and I think we need to be cognizant of it. Is the navigation center that, possibly, is the Upper Room that, possibly? I ride my bike up the bike trail a lot. I see them all up there hanging, because they got what they need right there. We take this very seriously, the county as well, staff is working diligently. We are working with staff, as well as your local law enforcement and ours, to use the tools now that are available to us to deal with mainly the chronic component. Those that need help, want help, we've got the services, and I think you all know that. It's the ones that don't are the problem, and we are working diligently. Chief Rennan was in a meeting with us here recently. Mayor, you were there as well. And we hopefully will have some headway in the next couple, three months to try to bring some of that, the numbers down that are the people that are really causing some of those problems. We gonna get rid of all of them? I don't think so. Big fear right now, and it's been raised, is fire. I think that we had another, had one yesterday. So we have got to be diligent. The county, again, is working very diligently with our staff to really try to address the real problem. And I know your comments, John, we ride together frequently, and we bounce things off of each other. So we are very concerned about our public, not only in the city, but the county, and the city is the county, and the county is the city. So again, it's a great opportunity to share some information. There are some successes for those that truly want it. Our state has failed us miserably in this whole process, and trying to work through and navigate that whole lack of program help, other than funding, and I don't care. You can't throw all the funding in the world at this to fix it, because it becomes an entitlement program, and then you don't help anybody. We truly want to help those that will accept the help. So I thank you for this opportunity. Thank you again to staff for being here, and all of you for listening. It's, if it were that simple, it would have been solved a long time ago. But again, without state's collaboration, it makes it that much more difficult. But I am confident with recent discussions that we're going to make some headway on the chronic side of this equation. So thanks, and always available. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Veerkamp, and thank you for mentioning that. I was, I was trying to decide what I wanted to say up here, because, you know. Yes, I, you know, it's funny, we've been talking, as the supervisor said, we've been talking back and forth about the situation and how we can deal with it. And we've always come back to the same thing, though. There needs to be help. There needs to be help. We don't want to just be sticks. There has to be carrots. And they're important, and we see from the data that it actually can work. But for the folks that don't want help, you know, I mean, God bless them, I have as much empathy as the next human being. But if they don't want help, they can go not get help somewhere else. And, and I've been very heartened by the discussions with the sheriff's office, with PD, with the county, about addressing that side of it. We will not break the law. We will not violate a single person's civil rights. But we will also make sure that this is a safe community. And the fire thing is real. We've had three fires in two weeks now, and the fact that one of them, over the last few years, hasn't taken off, is an absolute miracle. But you can't rely on miracles. So anyway, thank you for those comments, Supervisor Veerkamp. I appreciate them very much. And thank you for coming and talking to us. We really appreciate it. And we will take you up on that meeting perhaps, so we can talk about this in a more constructive way. Anyway, thank you very much for that. And we will now move on to the rest of our agenda. All righty. Oh, thank you for the public comment as well. I do appreciate that. All right, Consent Calendar. All matters listed under the Consent Calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion by roll call vote unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. The reading of the full text of all resolutions will be waived unless a council member requests otherwise. So, do we have any council member that wishes to take some, that wishes to take something off of the Consent Calendar? No, okay, great. I'd like to open up the Consent Calendar to public comment. Thank you very much. I will bring it back here. Do we have any comments, questions, or couldn't I have a motion, please?
Motion to move Consent Calendar.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gottberg?
Aye.
Mayor Clorici?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Public comment, this is the open mic program, part of our program tonight, on non-agendized items. Remember that, non-agendized. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. State law prohibits the
law prohibits the council from acting on any items not listed on the agenda except by special action of the city council under very specified circumstances. The mayor reserves the right to limit the speaker's time to three minutes. And as I like to say, let's treat each other with dignity when we get up there to talk. So we consider that as part of our discussion, and don't say anything up there that you would not want to have someone else say about you. So practice some discretion, the golden rule, as it were. All right. And now we will open up, oh, for oral communications. Gosh, after all that, and nobody wants to talk. I tell you, that's a little, oh, wait, wait. Jim, public comment. Yeah, come on. Don't, oh, jeez. Don't fault you.
Thanks for giving me an opportunity. My name's Jim Cahill.
Yes, it is.
I moved here in seventy-eight, and I spent my whole career at Eldorado High School as a special ed teacher. Well, I'm here today to talk about the the city pool. I paid money to swim laps in that pool a lot. My kids all went there. Softball, lap swim. I'll give you a little history about what lap swims have done for me after an injury. Union Mine was a good place for that to go, because Union Mine had public swims in the morning for laps from two thousand eight to two thousand and eleven. They shut it down, and they sold it to a swim team, and they kept the public out. These are options I'm giving you. In shape, down the hill, shallow pool, four lanes, that's it. Cameron Park, from six AM to eight AM, lap swim, that's it. Eldorado Hills, they had, they have a nice pool, and the county did not give money to the city for the pool. A supervisor mentioned that they want people to come and swim in the Eldorado Hills pool, not City of Placerville. I I just thought that was not good. The other places, Folsom Pool and South Lake Tahoe. This is, that pool's the only pool between South Lake Tahoe and Cameron Park for the public to use. One thing that the model of that pool has never changed. When kids get out of school, they open it. When kids go back, they close it. It's get, and the calendars for the schools are all getting crazy. One thing that I say to people about that pool, it's a senior healthcare facility, not just for kids. I know lots of people who were swimming regularly in that pool using the aquatic exercise, who don't go there anymore. It's a rehab place, low-impact. It's a, it's a really good spot. We've spent money and built that pool, and we open and close it for way too short a time. Here's a solution. I want, I'd like to get the city to extend the season to the first of October, not close it down in August. Another thing I think is important, you could raise the fees for lap swim. You don't need a whole bunch of people there. You need two lifeguards and a supervisor for lap swims. The guards just sit there and watch us. Raise the fees. Now, I'm going to finish it, because I want to tell you a story about people that I've seen swimming in that pool. The other day I was in there in the morning, I watched a guy with a stroke. He hobbled in, took off his, took off his leg support, got in that pool, and was just sidestepping back and forth and back and forth. And when he got out, he was stronger. Okay? Thanks for your time, and I know this isn't, but it's, I think it's really important that we use that facility better. Thanks.
Thank you, Jim.
Are we ready? Good evening. My name is Uncle Fuzzy. A lot of you know me. I'm here about your pool also. I was over this morning talking to Brian and the Board of Supervisors. Okay, I grew up in River City, had a community pool three blocks away. It's where the Forty Niners had their training camp, so I remember that. And I have to agree with Tim. You know, this is the only place in this county that where families can get together. They got grass. They got places for the kids to play. We can go swimming. Somebody will say, well, you can go to Lotus Park. Well, you know, you don't have your life vest on and all stuff. A youngster may go on down the river. So my feeling is, we need to have this pool open. I haven't used it in a while. My grandson's twenty-eight, so I haven't been around for a while. I'm not a resident of Placerville, the town. I have a zip code. I'm a stakeholder in a building at five fifteen Main Street, which some of you know about. So I made a proposal to the Board of Supervisors this morning. I'm also the president of the United States Go Panning Association, which you know, provide, we're supervisors of the two thousand sixteen Go Panning, five oh one C three. I have a little money left over, so I I teach Go Panning. I do things that are kid-oriented, and I think this pool is definitely kid-oriented. Besides us older people that have to get around, John knows that, and maybe Joe doesn't, you know. But so here's my proposal to them. I told them for every ten thousand dollars they gave, I would throw in fifteen hundred bucks. So if they give thirty thousand, I'll put forty-five hundred dollars in through the United States Go Panning Association. And if anybody is interested, just watching this or listening to this, and has a retirement plan where they have to take an RMD, you know what that is, required, there's a thing called Qualified Charitable Deduction, where I can take the money over here, don't have to pay tax, and I can give it to a city, a county, a school. So that's what we had. That's why we were able to purchase the building at five fifteen Main Street, because some of us got together and did it that way. We received some help from the Museums Foundation. So if anybody is interested, I can show you through. Mr. Warren's been helping me finding a little bit about the timeframe and the dollars and everything, where to go to look at this, and I appreciate that very much. So the challenge is, can we get the money? And I have to, are you still here, Brian? Can you get, I asked him to put it on the consent calendar, so we can talk about it. Okay, so if it's on the consent calendar, please show up. I will. Thank you.
Thank you, Uncle Fuzzy.
Off the back of it.
Did you break, did you break something on our podium? We all together here? What is that? Is that the remote control? It didn't work before? Okay. All right.
Ruth Carter again, City of Placerville.
Next.
And I want to bring this up again. I know I brought this up earlier in a different meeting when we were talking about the pool. But let's bring our community buy-in back, and let's think bigger. Let's stop thinking so small. Sponsorship, figure out, let's put our heads together, put a public and city council committee together. I know that's what you guys need, like a hole in a head, another committee. Okay, I'm sorry, I get it. But at the same time, all of our parks, you know, we don't have enough money coming from just our sales tax. We're not getting anything from the state. We're not getting anything from anybody else. We need to take care of our own, and how can we do that? Times are tight right now, but there are still businesses out there that would be willing to spend five hundred dollars, a thousand dollars, you know, five thousand dollars to sponsor one of our parks. We could do that for every park in the city, and I would be happy to head that up. I would be happy to help with that in any way possible. And, you know, like our pool pump, we could have easily had that cost covered. So let's, let's talk about solutions and not just point the finger at, you know. I I hear all kinds of things on social media with the, you know, cities mismanaging the money. No, that's not what's going on here, guys. We just don't have enough. But how do we change that? We get community buy-in. That's what I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Steve May. I've lived here all my entire life, except for twenty years when I went out to explore the world. I grew up at the swimming pool. My kids grew up and went to the swimming pool. When I was a real little kid, before I actually landed here in Placerville, we had a place that, the swimming pool, you could actually go in and and demonstrate the fact that you could swim. They would give you a little star or passing nugget and say, okay, you're good to go swimming. Do that for everybody here. There's plenty of adult, of, pardon, of adults that can learn how to swim, that know how to swim, that can operate eyeballs to look at, see if people are in trouble swimming. It doesn't cost a lot of money to do that. The sponsorship's a great idea. That's a brilliant idea there. You know, there's all kinds of ways. But the pool, again, it's not open that long. It's open for, what, two months out of the year. It's not even open the hottest months of the year that we have here in Placerville. I mean, come on. We all know, we're roasting it September and October, and like, good God, when's the snow going to come? Well, we don't need to wait for the snow. We got a swimming pool. It's a beautiful facility. I remember when they took down the old one and put this new one in. They screwed up on that, and they had to take half the whole fencing back down and put it up again in the right way. But the point is, it's here for the kids, it's here for the adults, it's here for us old folks that are turning older, and it 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 just needs to stay open. It doesn't need to be closed. We can do away with some road fixings or whatever have you, if it's going to help keep the pool open. But keep it open for everybody. Keep it open for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Any anyone else wish to talk to us? All right, seeing no one else. Thank you all very much. We will be addressing the pool in some degree in our budget discussions, and there's a little bit of good news out there, I think. Last time I talked to anybody about it, or they bothered to talk to me. And so, and and yeah, so, well, anyway, thank you very much for all of that, and it's very, it's understandable, and we do our best to try to keep it open as long as humanly possible. Do we have any written communication?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we did receive one item of written communication regarding the Aquatic Center.
Yes.
Copies are on the back table, and you have also received a copy.
Great. Thank you. All right. So let's see, bring it back here. Items pulled from the consent calendar? Do we did not have any? We have no ordinances. So now we get into the really riveting part of our show, the budget. And, no, it starts. Oh, this is, oh, well, eleven point one, but I consider this kind of a budget thing. You know, they're going to tell us what we're not spending enough money on, maybe, I don't know. Everything down here, trust me, work with me on this one. Okay, public hearings, we have several of them. Eleven point one. Consider approving AB twenty-five sixty-one, and I really would like to know why this is a law. But go ahead, Mr. Warren.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So this is a new item that will be on your agenda annually.
Yes.
So on September twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, Governor Newsom signed Assembly Bill twenty-five sixty-one into law, which became effective January first of this year. The law amended the Myers Millius Brown Act by adding section thirty-five oh two point three to the government code. This law requires that a public agency present the status of agent, excuse me, vacancies, recruitments, and retention efforts during public, a public hearing like tonight, before the governing board at least once per fiscal year. Because the city adopts an annual budget, this presentation must be made prior to the adoption of the final budget, which is a few items down. During the hearing, the city shall identify any necessary changes to policies, procedures, and/or recruitment activities that may lead to obstacles in the hiring process. And I'm happy to report there have been no changes to policies, procedures that will further lead to obstacles in hiring, our hiring process. The biggest challenge in hiring process continues to be lack of qualified applicants. The status of the city's position vacancies are as follows. We have a vacant associate engineer, water reclamation facility chief plant operator, and a water reclamation facility operator for, and recruitment efforts are underway for those positions. To aid recruitment and retention efforts, the city continues to evaluate each vacant position's salary to ensure the pay is as competitive and within market as possible. For example, on May thirteenth of this year, the city council approved a five point oh three percent salary increase to the water reclamation facility plant operator position, chief plant operator position, effective May twenty-fourth of this year. The city also afforded pay increases and various incentives for all bargaining units recently, which are summarized on page two of the report. The pay increases and various incentives for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six have been incorporated into the proposed operating budget, which you mentioned earlier, which is included in tonight's agenda under a separate cover. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Do we have any questions for staff? No? Okay. Then I am going to open a public hearing to allow staff to give, hold a public hearing on city positions, vacancies, recruitment, and retention efforts, and receive input from the employee organizations, the public, and the city council in accordance with AB twenty-five sixty-one. The hearing is open. The hearing is closed. Okay. Bring it back up here. We had our public hearing, and that's it, right? That's it? All right. You know, that was great. Someday, someone's going to say something, and everyone's going to be shocked. All right. Eleven point two. Consider adopting the proposed fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six operating budget and capital improvement program budget as presented. Mr. Warren?
Thank you, Mayor Clarici, members of the council. I know you've seen this document three times now, so I'll try to keep my comments short. Over the past six months, the city's budget team, which is comprised of the city manager and all department heads, and the assistant finance director, has collectively developed both the operating budget and CIP budget in a manner that aligns with the city council's established fiscal policies, strategic plan, and maintains essential program delivery to the greatest extent possible. As part of the budget development process, the city council held a special budget workshop on April thirtieth of this year, and staff presented departmental requests, including alternative service levels or changes in ongoing program, capital outlay or equipment, CIP projects, conference training and travel requests were also received, and we received input from the council and the public. A second budget workshop was held on May twentieth of this year, and staff presented the draft operating and CIP budgets for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, and received additional input from the city council and the public. The Measure HL Sales Tax Committee met on both April fourteenth and June second of this year to discuss the proposed street sewer system, water system projects that should be funded and constructed over the next year or two or more. An initial public hearing was held regarding the budget on June tenth of this year, and staff received additional input from the city council and the public. Let's see. However, the proposed operating budget assumes the, excuse me, both the proposed operating and CIP budget essentially assume the same revenue and expenditure assumptions as what was discussed at the budget open hearing on June tenth. However, the proposed operating budget assumes the same aquatics program as last year, including the continuation of the midweek public swim and potentially the extended season through August. This was made possible thanks to renegotiation of a propane agreement by Matt Lishman, Recreation Superintendent, which will save the city approximately eleven thousand dollars annually. Due to the financials constraints within the general fund, staff will continue to evaluate the extended aquatics season and making any further cost-saving recommendations to the city council in July. Staff also plans on returning to the city council this summer with the results of the Water Waste Water Cost of Service Study and recommend, recommendations for the updated master fee schedule, which will raise approximately one hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars in additional general fund revenue. The budget documents are the same format as last year, including multi-year summaries, aggregate operating revenues and expenditures, as well as detailed expenditure summaries for all department and division and CIP budgets. The proposed operating budget is balanced overall and totals twenty-four million nine hundred eighty-two thousand five hundred and thirty-three dollars. The proposed general fund budget is, totals eleven million two hundred and sixty-two thousand six hundred and forty-five dollars, which is a six point four, four percent more than last year. However, it's important to note that last year's general fund budget included seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars in reduction to the police patrol personnel costs due to the ARPA fund taking on those costs for one year in order to meet our December thirty-first encumbrance deadline. The operating budget includes expected economic impacts, existing salary and benefit commitments to employees. The proposed budget includes forty-seven thousand dollars for health and safety-related training, two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars in new equipment, from desktop computers to portable barricades for downtown special events. With the cooling local economy, the proposed general fund budget was more challenging to balance as compared to budgets in just a few years ago. For example, the vacant associate planner position was frozen and unfunded in order to balance the budget. This is in addition to the three positions that were frozen and unfunded in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. The proposed reorganization with the Community Services Department is also included in the proposed operating budget and is protected, projected to save seventy-one thousand dollars total. the proposed operating budget and is projected to save seventy-one thousand dollars total. The details of the proposed reorganization are outlined in item twelve-point-three in tonight's agenda and includes changes in certain positions within the facilities, parks, and recreation division. Staff takes these cuts very seriously, the entire budget team, and will continue to look at ways of gaining further cost savings and raising revenue in order to restore those positions. For example, staff will be working on completing the update to the master fee schedule and the Water-Wastewater Cost of Service Study. Staff plans on returning to the City Council on July eighth to request twenty-two thousand dollars in repairs and improvements for the playground equipment located at Benham Park and Lions Park. The proposed CIP budget totals two million seven-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars and includes new, eight new projects, from the small center street parking lot fence replacement to the secondary clarifier number one laundress recoding project. The budget is a living document that can be changed at any time. I would like to publicly thank the budget team, the Measure HL Sales Tax Committee, and the City Council for once again working together to balance this year's budget, which I know wasn't easy, and as a responsible plan for operating the city over the next twelve months, considering our anticipated resources and a wise investment in the future. I also want to thank your Assistant Finance Director Natalie Torncasa for all her help in preparing the budget documents, huge help there. So with that said, we respectfully request that the City Council approve the proposed fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six operating and CIP budgets. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
It's too bad the folks left because we actually made the pool happen a little bit more, but they'll find out. It's what I always, you want to kind of keep them here for a little bit. Okay, do we have any questions right now? We have chewed on this a number of times, but there might be more. Okay. Um, okay, I have to open a public hearing. So I'm going to open a public hearing regarding the FY twenty-five, twenty-six operating budget and capital improvement program for the city of Placerville. The hearing is open.
Sue Rodman, resident of Placerville and member of the Measure H, Measure L Committee. And I spent four hours going through the entire budget document and looking at what everybody, all of the different departments were, had accomplished, and what they proposed, and what their, what their finances were. And at the end of that four hours, I said, you know, for a small city, we get an amazing amount of value for the taxes we pay. I am just amazed at how well this city is managed and run. And I would like to thank all the department heads and the City Council. And tell you, I very much appreciate how hard you work to make this a very wonderful place to live. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Sue. Anyone else wish to comment?
Shout out to all the department heads and Matt Lishman. Oh, my gosh, that was clutch for the season in our city pool, so, yeah. I'm just going to echo Sue's comments. Everybody's wonderfully working together and super excited to see what we can do in these tight times moving forward.
Thank you, Ruth. Anyone, oh, mom is coming up.
Good evening, council and staff. Kathy Lishman, I wasn't going to say anything, but since Matt's
Oh, go right ahead. Go ahead.
Since Matt's name was mentioned twice, I have to say, he grew up swimming in that city pool, and to have the public swim part at least partially back is absolutely wonderful.
You had to really drag her up. No, anyway, that was great. Thank you very much, Kathy, very much. Anyone else wish to comment? Yes, on behalf of the entire City Council, thank you all very much. This was not an easy task, too many things left on the table that we need to deal with, but I know that we will get to them eventually. And as I say all the time, buy local, because that's where we make our money. So if you go outside the six and a half square miles of this city and buy something that you could buy in town here, shame on you. Anyway, all right, all kidding aside, we will, we will close the public hearing, because I think we actually have to do that, and bring it back up here for any comment or anything else, or I will entertain a motion.
I'll move we adopt the twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
I have a motion.
I will second that.
We have a motion in a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gotberg?
Aye.
Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, item eleven point three, because no year would be not complete until we deal with our GAN limits. So consider establishing the appropriation limit, GAN, for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, and determining compliance with Government Code Section 7910. Is it really for twenty-three, twenty-four?
It should be twenty-four, twenty-five.
I was going to say.
If it's, I apologize for the type of.
It's okay.
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is a routine item that you take action on annually. Section 7910 of the State Government Code requires each local government agency to establish an appropriation or GAN limit by resolution. Each year, the city is required to adjust its GAN limit by both the prior year per capita personal income increment and the prior year change in population. The change per capita, per capita personal income was actually three-point-six-two percent, and the change in population was point-one-two percent, according to the State Department of Finance.
Never changed.
Based on these factors, the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five GAN limit is calculated to be thirty-one million one-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars. The general fund proceeds revenue subject to the GAN limit is nine million seventy-two-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars, leaving twenty-two million fifty-nine-thousand-three-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars of unused appropriation limit. Once again, Placerville is well within its GAN limit, and with that, ask the council to adopt the resolution establishing the GAN limit for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five.
All right, do we have any questions about our GAN limit? No. I will open this to public comment. This is not a public hearing. It's in the public hearing section. It is? That's not what it says on my agenda. It just says, consider this. I'm, you know what, I can ad lib this, I'm good at this. I will open a public hearing for anyone who wishes to speak about our twenty-four, twenty-five GAN limit as required by law. The hearing is open. The hearing is closed. Okay, thank you very much. We'll bring it back up here. Do I have a motion?
I'll move adoption of the resolution.
We have a motion. We have a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gotberg?
Aye.
Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Let's see here, do we want to take a break, or do we just want to plow ahead? We're plowing ahead, folks. Are you over here? We're okay? Okay, good. Twelve point one, discussion, discussion and action items, twelve point one. Acknowledge and appoint the fifth member of the Personnel Board, Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Mayor and council. As you recall, at your last meeting, you were asked to ratify the appointment of two employees, selected members to the Personnel Board, and appoint two City Council-appointed members to the board. That took place at the last meeting. According to the ordinance, those four members were then to meet jointly and select a fifth member for the committee. The committee met on, trying to remember the date, last week, sorry. The committee did meet and selected the person that they would like to be part of that, and that is Christine Didlot, thank you, to be part of the committee. So the action for you tonight simply is to confirm that appointment, and then we'll move forward with the process. The other thing, just briefly to mention, is that the last meeting, you selected the terms of those members. Actually, the ordinance says that those members are to select their terms by lot when they're first appointed, and so we will allow them to do that when they next meet.
Cool. All right, well, thank you very much. Do we have any questions regarding this? No questions. I'm going to open this up for public comment. Does anybody wish to comment on this? Seeing no one wishing to comment, I will bring it back up here for action.
I'll move item twelve point one.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gotberg?
Aye.
Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Twelve point two, consider approving the broadband ISP contract, Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This action for you, before you tonight, is to simply select the first two internet service providers for our Placerville fiber program. As you know, in the past, when we've talked about this, we've planned to have an open system, which would allow many internet service providers, as many as want to, but in the beginning, in order to make it feasible for them to provide the service, we are limited to these two until we get enough subscriptions that we can then allow more to come in. So it will be opened up in the future. Previously, the council approved an RFP, which we sent out. We've received, I believe, five that were interested in doing the service. We did interviews with them, with us and city staff, and Entry Point, our consultant, and the most complete application and those that met our need the best were these two that are being proposed tonight, which is sumo fiber and advanced, advanced net fiber. So those two, we have been in contact with, we've met with them, and we would like to move forward with, with this process to get them going. They will assist with various things besides providing the service, they will also assist with marketing and meeting with those that may be interested in being part of the system. So, once we have this done, we can then, we will proceed with an agreement with them to allow them to move forward with marketing and assisting us with that process. So, again, just asking tonight for you to approve that and authorize myself to negotiate and execute the contract with them to provide that ISP service for the city.
Very good. Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any questions on this item? Seems fairly straightforward. Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to open this up for public comment. Does anybody wish to comment on our two potential internet service providers? Seeing no one wishing to comment, I will bring it back up here for action.
I'll move staff recommendation on twelve point two.
I have a motion.
I have a second.
We have a second. All, uh, no. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gotberg?
Aye.
Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Item twelve point three, consider approving the Community Services Reorganization Plan, Mr. Nishihara.
Thank you, Mayor Clarici, council members. The staff before, the staff report before you tonight outlines the Community Service Department reorganization plan for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. It is a decisive, low-risk strategy to address fiscal challenges while establishing a fundamental standard of maintenance built to elevate service quality and uphold sustainable operations. With an evidence-based and empathetic approach, I recognize the challenges faced by our dedicated staff affected by the role classifications and unfunded positions. Please know, the department and city are committed to supporting them through transparent transitions, retraining, and internal opportunities where possible. As indicated in the staff report, the February two thousand and twenty-five department-wide tide study, time study identified certain inefficiencies within my department. This organizational plan is drafted to address those gaps and overlaps. The goal is to meet the growing demands of our parks, facilities, trail, creek, programs, and services within the current financial limitations. It is important to take note, nationally, maintenance has surpassed staffing as the recreation and parks industry's top challenge. As suggested in the two thousand and twenty-five Signet Research Study published by Recreation Management, professionals, about sixty percent of them, cited aging infrastructure, rising costs, as it correlates to facility maintenance as critical. From two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-four, staffing was the main challenge. Today, in Placerville and across the nation, according to the survey, it is maintenance. My proposed reorganization confronts these challenges head-on, strategically realigning our team to prioritize frontline staff, standard operating procedures, and facility maintenance, ensuring that we adapt swiftly and effectively to these industry-wide priorities, reducing management layers, strengthening frontline operations with an additional maintenance worker, too, and a recreation coordinator position, and decentralizing fundamental decision-making. This approach empowers staff, fosters greater buy-in, increases personal accountability, and sets ownership of roles, fortifying the operational foundation. The reclassification of key roles, such as the new community service manager and assistant director positions, centralizes administrative functions, and enhances oversight, establishing clear standards of service and accountability. I aim to preserve treasured spaces like Lions Park and Gold Bug Park in mind. I am aiming to streamline permitting and to enrich the services for our residents. I believe this plan exemplifies fiscal stewardship and operational excellence. I'm available for questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Do we have any questions? No? No questions? You've done an incredibly thorough job, apparently, because there are no questions. I will open this up to the public now. Does anybody from the public wish to comment on our reorganization plan?
Sue Rodman, resident of Placerville, and I did read your entire presentation, and I think he has a good idea here. I think this will work, and I think it's something that has needed to be done for quite a while, and so, good job.
Thank you, Sue. Anyone else wish to comment?
Hello, I'm Brianna Delfino. I'm a city employee, and I just have some questions about what we're doing on this. So I know we froze some positions within that department. It looks like we're demoting some positions and then reclassifying other positions, which makes it look like it's a promotion. So, the reduction in the programs, you know, they're closed on Fridays. You know, we can utilize them being open to the public to add more, you know, accessibility to the public. They, sorry, I'm a little nervous.
Relax, take a breath, you'll be fine.
I mean, they have part-timers that cover, you know, to help, but again, they're closed to the public. So, yeah, sorry. Yeah, I think that's my concerns, is, you know, maybe seeing a job description for the two new positions, seeing the salary survey, or schedule, excuse me, for those two, to see if there's any increases in that, you know, because we are demoting two employees from their positions and adding another two higher authority people in that position. So that was my only concern.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to comment on this? All right, well, we'll bring it back up here. Do we have a response to these questions?
At this, at this time, there are no salary schedules being established. There's no change in any of the salaries. All it is, is a basic job description shift.
Okay.
And staff will be bringing a full report to implement those two specific job descriptions at the next City Council meeting.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Okay, I, I'm gonna, I am gonna show my ignorance. Are we not, are we, is the door closed on Fridays?
We have altered our services based on some of the gaps that
Okay.
in what we do, so we close, actually, just to be completely transparent, our new hours are, we're closed from twelve to one to help with some of the staffing for lunch, and we are modifying our schedule where the front desk is closed, and we're available for appointments and in-person meetings. If we're available, we're still working, but the front desk itself is closed.
Okay. Thank you very much for that clarification. You know, one of the things that we discussed when we were going through the budget issues was doing more with less, and that's kind of what we're trying to accomplish here. But we also are not going to work folks like rented mules, and I am very sensitive to this, and at some point, you have to cut back on service. That's, you can't keep working people hours and hours and hours and hours, and expect to get anything done. And you can put up a good show for the public, but behind that show will be a deterioration, both of staff and, and ultimately of the product that you're putting out there for the public. And And sometimes that's just going to, at least in my humble opinion, that means we're not open for business as much as we might have been under other circumstances. And I trust that staff will continue to provide a level of service that people have come to expect. But I don't think that it's unreasonable for us to say, you know, in order to get work done, and this is going to probably end up in other parts of our city structure as well, in order to get work done, we may engage publicly in a different kind of way. And that could be reduced, desk hours could be more things by appointment. I will tell you right now, I happened to be, I was working out before the, before the meeting, you can probably tell. And, and I just happened to overhear someone at the front desk talking on the phone, and they were getting, they were, they were, they called about the pool. And what was there, they're going to have like a party. And they, whoever they were talking to gave them excellent service. And I, I was eavesdropping, and I said, were you talking to the city pool? And then the gentleman said, yes, I was. And I said, how was that experience? And he said, it was fantastic. So I think we will continue to do fantastic things, but we will not crush our staff in the process. Sort of metaphorically, of course, we don't actually crush anybody, but you know, anyway, go ahead.
Just a couple of comments. One thing I wanted to mention that I don't think we've said publicly yet, that I believe both our second and third floors are now closing their offices during the noon hour, 12 to 1.
Yeah.
Or they're getting ready to, if they haven't already. How's that? And we have been talking about that.
Yes.
Again, that is due to, as you know, in our engineering department, we're down two positions
Yes.
because of just vacancies that
Right.
we have not been able to fill. Same thing on the planning department. As you know, we froze the position. They're very limited and it's, I don't like having the doors open when there's less than two people there, put it that way.
Understandable.
And so those are things that we are looking at. In addition, I want to just mention down here at the recreation and parks department, community services department, they are also down an employee due to a medical issue. And all of those things affect our ability to keep, keep things going. We will try. And we are looking at a potential solution to help out in the interim with that position that's out. And as we determine that we can, we will try to open the office as much as we can to the public, so.
Thank you very much for that. And one, part of it will be communication, too, in the new paradigm. We will just need to let folks know that this is how we're running the business now. And, and they'll get used to it. And then when we are flush with cash again, we can, we can open the doors more often and, because we'll have more people, hopefully. So anyway, thank you very much. Well done. We need a motion.
I will move 12.3.
I will second it with a thank you to Director Nishihara for your leadership in making this happen in these very difficult times.
Thank you very much for that. We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gotberg?
Aye.
Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Thank you very much. All right. Council reports from other agencies, this could go fairly quickly. El Dorado County Transit?
We are in between last meeting and next meeting, so nothing to report.
El Dorado County Transportation Commission?
Same.
Olafco?
We did not meet.
Saicog? We have a meeting coming up. Pioneer Community Energy?
We did meet. Sorry. We got a presentation from Cal ISO regarding their summer readiness and the status of the California power grid. Everything is looking great. So there's a good outlook for the summer power and should be no issues. We also passed our budget for next year.
Cool, well, thank you very much. One of the things when we, I'm sure all of you know this, we had three good snow years in a row, which almost never happens, which means we got lots of hydropower sitting out there. So we should have plenty of electricity. And I know they're putting up some of the world's biggest telephone poles up Cedar Ravine, so that ought to really help us all out a lot. Okay, fire safe.
Did not meet.
All righty. Opportunity Knox?
Did not meet.
Does anybody wish to comment on the meetings we have not gone to?
Went to one.
Well, you went to one, that's true. Do you want to comment on what he did? Pioneer Energy, okay. Thank you very much for that. Okay, are there any requests for future agenda items? I don't hear anything. Thank you very much. Item 15, city manager and staff reports. Receive and file the police report, chief. All right. And do you have any questions for the chief?
Just really concerned when I'm seeing the registered sex offenders go up in our city, six high-risk as transients, just concerning.
Yes. And I've reached out to CCR and had conversations with them about that. Their Auburn unit who does the monitoring, we're just trying to do the best we can right now with the situation that we're in.
We can, let's, I want to talk about this, but not right now.
Okay.
Okay. Because I just had an idea, but I want to talk to you first. Okay. Thank you very much for that, chief. The fire station 25 run report, Chief Cordial.
Good evening, Mayor and councils. In your packet, you'll see the run stats for Station 25 during the month of May. And the crews have been busy, and I'd just like to kind of publicly thank all of our firefighters and our partner agencies, Cal Fire and the other fire districts, for the support during the Bonanza fire, which occurred last week. It went for about 181 acres, which was a pretty intense fire activity, given the fact that it was June. So that's a bit alarming, but we have seen an increase in the wildland fires. Most of them have, with the exception of Bonanza, been kept fairly small, but I think we're in for a tough season. So I appreciate Sue's continual comments on making sure that we're all being diligent with our fire safety, because we are in that time of year.
Right, thank you very much. Did the fire start in Bonanza auto wreckers or outside of it? Or can you say?
The fire is still under investigation.
Okay, great, thank you very much for that. All right. And, oh, has, have everybody, have all of we given you information? You? Oh, the thing, you know, I sent you an email.
Oh, yes.
Okay, great.
I gave mine direct.
Yes, for the hours worked.
The hours worked on your property.
Yes.
Okay, yes, okay.
Anybody that has not done that can send it to me directly, and I will forward it to the necessary people.
Can we just make it up for our neighbors?
Yes.
Like, could, could we, you know, I've
It's our system.
Because, yeah, because, I mean, my neighbor is out there weed whacking all day long, and I could just tell you his address. Okay, I'm going to do that. All right. Thank you very much for that. Development Services, Ms. Kendrick.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to highlight from the building division, we have instituted a new virtual inspection plan. And so for the Mallard departments, and actually, I've seen it in operation, they have a drone that goes in and it does a 360-degree view. So it's a way that our department can work more efficiently and get more inspections done. So it's, it's pretty cool. So if you ever have a chance, stop by, see Greg, he can show you how that works. We did see an increase in planning division applications, and I hope that trend continues. And then we are seeing more cases closed for code enforcement as they are getting ready to transition over to the police department. So our officer is trying to clean up some of those, those cases, but that's all I have to report. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, thank you very much for that. Drones, huh? Great. A little big brother-y there, but all right, we're good. You know, whatever works. And, oh, by the way, on the issue of the code enforcement, we have talked and I have talked, and we're going to, we want to make sure that no stones are left unturned. There is some concern out there in the community, and I can, I understand it, and I kind of, you know, I'm kind of with them on it, to make sure that we are covering all of our enforcement needs as this thing goes from you to you and all that other stuff. So I have no doubt that it will be, but.
I think the biggest benefit for the city is that she'll be afforded a lot more resources in the form of officers
Ooh.
with those inspections and enforcement activities.
That'll, that'll get you some code enforcement, that's for sure. All right, thank you. All right, that's great. Do you have any comments on our, on our, our department reports?